I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your man standing. We all may want to say a prayer for, I believe it's Uvalde, Texas, for the elementary school shooting that we had there today. Fourteen students and one teacher were killed. Anyway, if you'd like to say a silent prayer for them, I know it would be appreciated. Brings us to agenda additions and deletions. I see we have a couple of deletions on here. Do we want to, does somebody want to do that?
Yeah, I'll take that, Mr. Mayor. We delete item 4A, Presentations, New Business, and also ask to strike item 9B, Comprehensive Plan Presentation. 4A as in apple, 9B as in boy.
Very good. Any other additions or deletions? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor? unanimous. Brings us down to Presentations. Adam, where are you? Is Mike here?
Mike is not here.
Okay.
So, I've got a few things that I want to do presentations on really quick. So, Mike Wright, you can see in the picture there, was awarded the 2022 North Carolina APWA, which is American Public Works Association Leadership Award. He got that award last week. That award's nominated by peers such as myself or other public works people around the state. Then the award goes to the Leadership and Management Division Board with APWA, and then they vote on that, who that person is going to be for this year. So, Mike was nominated and did receive that award. Some criteria for it is you have to have more than eight years of service in government, you have to manage employees, you have to be professional, have leadership qualities, and then have a high customer service work ethic. So, Mike is all of those things plus many more, so I just wanted him to get his recognition here locally. He got the award last week at the conference. The next thing I want to mention, it was not, it's just another award, but I want to make sure we talk about it really quickly. So, we do a, for the last six years, we have done a Public Works Employee of the Year. That is just on our staff. So, this year Cody was awarded that, it's voted on by his peers, so other people in the Public Works Department. Out of that, Cody had a couple of people that wrote things on the form forum, wrote he's had a lot of growth this year, he's the hardest worker in the department, he's a good leader and a good new crew leader. So, this past year Cody was promoted to a crew leader position. So, I just think it's good to get their voices out there and get them to be seen. One final last thing to present to y'all as we're coming out of Public Works Week. Abby has done a great job at putting this infographic together, and she'll be posting it in the next day or so online for everybody to see, but y'all kind of get the first take and look at it. So, one thing that we talked about during the end of Public Works Week is we talked about all of the stuff that they've done in a year. So, a crew of, really it's thirteen people in the field, and then you have myself and Pam here in the office, but everything that you see up there on that list is what a crew of fifteen total people did. So, some pretty big numbers to look at is the number of street projects that they did. That can be anything from a pothole to a street sign. Look at the number of solid waste requests. So, that's taken total here at Town Hall. So, that could be Pam, that could be me, that could be Susan at the front desk, but that's total requests that they took in a year. The last one I'd say to look at down there at the bottom is that bottom line down there. So, that's events kind of going on at Crooked Creek on your left, and then if you go across the last one, that thousand plus, that's total events that went on that park that they either had to prep for or clean up from. So, that could be a shelter rental, that could be anything, you know, things that they're doing on a daily basis. But this is just stuff that we could track, but it's a lot of great information to be able to see. This is part of what our work order system allows us to be able to do is track this type of information. Thank y'all.
Any questions?
I just want to say, I think we all agree that these people make the town and you look good.
That's right. Definitely the latter there, for sure.
I do appreciate what they do, and as far as Mike Wright is, well, after I got elected, first meeting I came here, council meeting to get sworn in, when I got out of the car, the first person standing there congratulating was Mike Wright. And the weird thing about that is, I don't say, I've seen him at a council meeting since. You know, I don't know why he was here that night, but he's the first one congratulating being, so I've always appreciated. I see him over here working on the park. He's a nice guy.
I think, I think when he saw you, he felt that the town was in good hands, so he doesn't have to come anymore.
So, thank y'all.
Any other questions? Now, you want to tell them real quick about, you almost couldn't get him to go get the award or?
Yeah, so I can, funny story about Mike Wright. So, the week before, he was at a conference, it's the conference that he usually goes to, which is the Buildings and Grounds Conference for Public Works. The one where this award's given out is the Leadership and Management Division Conference, so I usually go to that one. So, I had to like, kind of get him to go to it to get his award, but I had to ask, like, hey, do you mind just, you know, I know you were just at one, but can you go to another? And he goes, well, if I can get somebody to watch the house and, you know, the different things. I was like, okay. And I was like, I was sweating bullets that he was going to say, no, I can't go, and then I was going to just have to tell him, you've got to go, you don't have a choice, you're getting an award. It was a complete surprise to him, they called his name, he had no clue, so it was great. It was great.
Thank you, Adam. He does do a wonderful job. Lucky to have him.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that brings us to public comments. I'm assuming we don't have anybody signed up for public comments, so we can skip that general comments and the council feedback, because you don't have anything to feed back on, I guess. So, that brings us to law enforcement. Captain James.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I don't have a report for you tonight, but a lot of events going on in town, a lot of things going on around town and about town. I would like to give a shout out to two of my deputies who are proud new Papas within the last week. I've got another one that's due any day, and then one that's waiting on a phone call that should go probably sometime before the weekend. So, I'm going to be down four for, because they're all first timers, so they'll be all brand-new daddies, so they'll be gone for a little while. But the, just adding to the family, I couldn't be more proud for them than anything. But the, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you've got anything, want to know what's going on. The biggest thing we're prepping for right now is Family Fun Day, which is the weekend after next. And I think we're, from what I'm gathering from Hayden, we're expecting a lot of people in a very short amount of time.
Do you have any idea what's going on on Indian Trail Waxaw Road with, they're doing boring into the street and surveying and all that? Thought maybe your guys would have come upon it.
No, the only event we're working right now, I'd be glad to tell anybody, we got, we've received, well, since I've been here, last two, two and a half years, this repetitive complaints about speeding on venture road. Today, as of today at about 12:00 PM, there's eight, nine, or ten officers total that are working a twelve-hour shift between Waxaw Indian Trail and Potter's Road, and they're not issuing warnings, they're writing speeding tickets. So, it's become a problem. But I will tell you, in that enforcement effort that they're doing between our safe unit, which is the DWI unit, and then the traffic unit we've got here in Indian Trail, over the period of the last couple of weeks, they worked it a day, you know, a couple hours at a time, up until today, they've made numerous drug arrests, a couple drunk driving arrests, and the, and a couple warrants have been served off of traffic stops, just on that stretch of road right there. But the, they're doing phenomenal work, and I can't be more proud of them. But no, I've got no idea about boring or anything in the road.
Surveying and boring and, yeah.
No, no idea.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, Captain James, on Sundays lately, there's been tournaments of Carolina courts, and there's also, I think, flag football on the field.
Yes.
Parking has been an issue.
It has.
Any, any of your deputies patrolling or planning patrol around that?
Yes.
It's kind of seems a little bit heavy from about, I want to say about 12 o'clock, maybe to about 4:00, that's kind of the window that I've seen. Just wanted to probably bring that to your attention, just from a parking standpoint. There's, we don't have adequate parking, and I also saw some people parking here at Town Hall, but wanted to sort of bring that to your attention.
We met with Carolina Courts Wednesday of last week, myself, Mr. Kramer with Parks and Rec, and Ms. Dees with planning and code enforcement. Over the period of the last several months on the weekends, the, it's the spring season, and the problems have picked up over there, it's causing more traffic, but, which is not local traffic outside the flag football. But we've had numerous disturbances, a couple fights, refs being threatened, that kind of thing, but it's all been dragging resources for a couple hours at a time, on Saturdays and Sundays. But we met with them on Wednesday and trying to come to some kind of resolution about parking for one, because one of those weekends, we had cars parked from Town Hall, parking lot was full, the right-hand side going up, they were parked in the grass and then the trees over against the rec equipment. So, I've been in conversation with Mr. McLamb and Mr. Kramer, and we're going, we're posting some no parking signs and going to take some enforcement action on parking there as well. And we're trying to work with Carolina Courts between event, other events that are going on in the park and Carolina Courts to try to, to try to open up more spaces, as many spaces as we can.
Yeah, so, in regards to that, I was one of the people, I tried to get a parking spot, I couldn't, and I, I had to park, right? I was in there on Sunday afternoon. But in terms of the, just the security standpoint, I mean, was one of the suggestions that they hire an off-duty deputy in there?
It was. Either between, you know, hiring private with us or having some kind of private security, yeah, just for, for nothing else, just for, you know, having a scene.
Because when any one bad incident is really, you know, pouring the town, so.
That's right.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
I raised my hand. I'm sorry, okay. Now, I just want to say congratulations to Sheriff Kathy on this big win on the primary, and I just think, given the huge amount of love shown by the voters there in the primary that, and I know we don't have a challenger in November, that he's coming back, and I think it's just a testament to the great respect that Sheriff's Office, yours office and all as a whole, that the people in the community have, and I think it's a testament to the great job, and we're really fortunate to have that type of relationship here in Union County and Indian Trail. I just thank you and him, and congratulations if you'll pass it on, I appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, I sure will, I sure will tell him.
Thank you, Cap.
Okay, well, thank you, Captain James.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? unanimous. That brings us to public hearings, FYI 2223 Budget Public Hearing. Mr. McLaurin.
All right, I want to make a few opening comments before you open up the public hearing. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and this is one step in the process of approving the budget for the upcoming year. And as you know, state law requires that you know a public hearing, and our fiscal year is from July 1st to June 30th. The budget was released to the public and to yourself in early May, and we had a formal presentation on May 10th. For those that are interested in the budget, the budget is still available at the Union West Library and on our website. But before starting the FYI 23 Budget Discussion, I want to very briefly talk about where we are, where we project to be in FYI 22 when we close the fiscal year. We expect our revenues to exceed the budget by $1.2 million. This is led by ad valorem taxes, motor vehicle taxes for a total of $500,000, sales taxes, another $500,000, the ABC store distribution and planning fees. Our folks spend money conservatively, and we expect to come under the budget by $400,000 for a difference of $1.6 million. This will put us in a very good position as we start to take on projects. We have the flexibility of doing pay as you go. Some of the appropriations that we've been able to use this year is we've put money aside, $500,000 for the Public Works Building, we've provided support to our two athletic associations to help the youth of our town, and we have funded the update to our downtown plan that you will hear about in a few weeks. Now, let's look at the FYI 23 Budget that we're going to ask you to approve on June 14th. That operational budget is $19,396,380 and includes $2.8 million and some change that goes into your debt service and capital reserve, and we've talked about what all that means. The tax rate for this year will remain at eighteen and a half cent per hundred dollars of value. It's one of the lowest tax rates around, and y'all are all to be commended for your leadership on that. Of that money, the eighteen and a half cent in property tax, 7.44 goes to law enforcement, and you've heard the good work that they're doing. 5.79 is going to the increased solid waste that we've talked about, and 3.82 cents goes to debt service. The highlights of the new budget include some additional resources for the sheriff's office, some additional staff additions in park and rec, public works and administration, the 3% COLA we've talked about with the mayor at zero to 3%, and a change in the dependent healthcare contribution from 40, 40, from 40% to 45. We're also putting money in for increased road resurfacing and paving, and we're going to continue the progress on Indian Trail Road and Shady Bluff. We're continuing to put money aside, so when we do hear from the state on that land, we can move forward on a public works facility. And finally, as I mentioned, the increased solid waste cost. Since we presented the budget to you a few weeks ago, we've received some additional needed expenditures not exceeding $16,000 that we will blend into the new budget, and we will send you some updated budget figures in the next few days. In closing, I want to thank this council and the staff for their work on the budget. Also, I want to thank the leadership of the Finance Department for the good work that they do every day, every week, every year, in making sure that our finances are squeaky clean. I want to assure you as I start to close that you've got a great staff here, and they are ever mindful that it's not their money, but it's the taxpayers' money. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, before you open the public hearing.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
I have a couple comments, but do I get a, let me ask Ms. Queen, do I get a comment period after, after people have spoken?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I reserve my comments for after people've spoken, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, Mike, I appreciate that. I'd like to open public comments and close them, because we don't, we really don't have anybody to speak, so we can do it all at one time. And now we can go into council discussion. Would you like to say something now?
I can, thank you, appreciate it. My hand is raised.
I saw that.
All right, thank you. A few things I want to just mention. Mike, I really appreciate your presentation just now. You gave us a view of how we're going to end the year for 1.6 million favorable funds right there, so that's pretty good. So, that's good that we give us a contrast kind of where we're going to end up, and also setting a new budget for the next year, sort of where the money goes to, and I appreciate that. Mr. Cohen, if I'm not mistaken, so you were, it's been nine years since taxes were last raised in the town, right? The tax rate went up? It's been about nine years, right?
Nine or 10 years.
Nine or 10 years.
It's somewhere in there.
So, I want to give, you know, I want to give special recognition to the prior councils in terms of the tax rate that they've set, but also the fact that they allowed some of that money, that tax revenue, to go towards debt service, to be able to undertake some of the projects that we have. Under your leadership, Mike, we've seen, you know, we have a capital improvement plan, some of the things that we want to sort of think of as the town matures, as you were mentioning when you first came on. Your staff, especially the finance, Jim, I want to recognize your efforts there, the work that you guys are doing, Adam, Todd, Abby, Kathy, Captain James, all of you guys taking your time and putting this together. We have forty-something thousand residents as of the last census, right now, I'm not sure, but we have forty-something thousand residents who depend on us for various services, whether it's trash or law enforcement, code enforcement, or even just, you know, recreation stuff, whether it's the parks and different activities. So, I want to say to all of you, kudos for a job well done, to the council for the time, the questions that they've had leading on, leading on this budget, and, you know, I look forward to another good year. Hopefully, we can continue to do some good work, get some things done on behalf of residents to really improve their lives. And that's the reason why I decided to run, just to help improve people's lives with various things that we can do here on behalf of them. But thank you very much, sir. That's all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Mr. McIntyre, anybody else with any comments? Tom?
I just think the public was fortunate in the presentation you gave last meeting. That, since I've been here, that was the most thorough presentation of numbers of the budget and information, I think, that went out to the public in that format since I've been here. So, I thought that was really good, and, and I think the nine years of the eighteen and a half percent low tax rate, I don't know if people remember, we had that consultant or the, all of their come in here, and she had a list of like fifty towns, and I think we were the largest population-wise of those fifty. We had the fourth lowest tax rate and the fourth highest amount of money in our general fund, so it's impressive. And I think you being here nine years and helped leading that, eighteen and a half is, feel good about nominating you for, making you a mayor and leading that. I give you kudos for being here during all that.
Appreciate that.
And the staff, and I know McLamb's been here the whole time too, and a lot of you and Jim, and, I mean, and, you know, and the people don't realize that our, I mean, I think the Sheriff's Department just does a solid, I mean, just a solid relationship of only asking for what we really need here in Indian Trail, and it's just been a great relationship that budget-wise and tax-wise just saves our people tons of money, and we get a great service. We got a low crime rate, we're in the community, and so I, you know, I just feel really good about it and appreciate, you know, the new people coming in, and so, and I think that, you know, the public actually has a good view of what we're doing in the budget, and thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, and everybody did that and part of it. So, that's all I got.
Appreciate anybody else. If nobody else has got, I'll say this, real quick, I was on the last council that raised taxes, and it was a very unpopular thing to do, that I will say, but I'll also say that a lot of good things happened. The parks got built with it, which was put before the people with a bond, and then, you know, what a lot of people don't realize is that over the years, that extra tax money has saved the town tons of money because of our AAA rating and things that all this money has done and helped us and put it in the bank, and I've always thought that it's better to have money in the bank than it is not to have money in the bank. That's pretty, that's, that's genius right there, isn't it? I was making a joke.
We're laughing.
But no, I do think that that's, but anyway, I'm very ticked on, I'm happy with all of you guys, your support, thank you very much for your kind words, and appreciate it. Without, without you guys, I wouldn't be here, so thank you very much.
Nice haircut, by the way.
And a great job, Jim, great job. What'd you say, Tom?
I said, nice haircut, by the way.
And Mike, great job. So, all of you, great, let's move on. We'll bring up Mr. McLamb for the ARPA and Town Fund Projects Funding Consideration Discussion.
Back up here again. So, I guess I'll just, what's the first one? The first one that we've got is just the public comment period, so you remember, we opened that up about three weeks ago now. To date, today I looked at the list, we had a little over eight hundred, or, sorry, a little over 380 responses to the survey, which is good. We had a quick uptick really quickly, and now we're kind of slowing down, but we're still getting some feedback. We are starting to hear from a couple other organizations, they're starting to call in and kind of ask what can and can't be done. So, really this time's just to open up a public hearing, but I'm going to assume, looking around the room, nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up.
So, but we still need to open and close, just so that we, yeah.
Yeah, we still open and close.
Yep.
It's all required, yes, that's fine.
Well, can I get a motion to, I'll make a motion to open it, and then I'll close it. Make a motion to, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, all in favor? All right, now, anybody want to make a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We got it, thank you.
Thank y'all for that.
That's good.
All right.
Any questions for Mr. McLamb?
Well, now we're going to jump down to that next item.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
So, the next item on the agenda is, we do have one agreement for y'all to approve tonight, so that's the agreement with Indian Trail Athletic Association. We remember at the last meeting, we pulled that one off, we still had a little bit of fine tuning to do, we've done that, so now that one's ready to go. Couple other things that I want to talk about before y'all approve that agreement is just other things going on in ARPA. Tonight with the consent agenda, y'all approved stormwater funds, First Avenue Project Stormwater Funds to come off of that project, but to use ARPA funds for that, so that's a great thing. That's going to allow us to stretch that budget as far as we can to do other stormwater projects. I mentioned about the survey, we're going to be meeting with the fire chiefs later this week to continue that work. You also, in just a few minutes, hopefully, will approve the Indian Trail Athletic Association Agreement. At the last council meeting, we talked about water lines for underserved areas of town, so that project, Mr. McLaurin has sent that on to the county manager, and they're hoping to take that up on the county commissioner sometime in June, if I remember right. So, that's kind of where that project's at, for that partnership between us and the county. We have spoken to the Boy Scouts, I actually just did that today. Back to School Bash, myself and Mike met with them this morning, so that project, you know, we're kind of gathering some information on that one. We'll be bringing that to the committee in the not-too-distant future. We did get some good information in a conversation with the town attorney today on how we'll be able to work through some of these projects, so that was good. Relay that information back to the committee when we meet next week, and we'll continue to move forward. One thing Mike and I have talked about a couple of times, that our committee meets usually on Tuesdays. Any of y'all are welcome to come, if y'all want to come to the meeting, I would just say, just let Mike know before, you know, if you want to come to that meeting, just so that we don't have all of y'all wanting to come to the same time, but that'll definitely, if you want to, it's open for y'all to come in and ask any questions, if you want to ask some offline. So, I will now go back to the top of this one, we said we need for y'all to approve the Indian Trail Athletic Association Agreement.
Okay, can I, can I get a motion to, for the Indian Trail Athletic Association Agreement?
I'll make that motion. I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the town of Indian Trail and the Indian Trail Athletic Association with regard to the town's previously motioned contribution of $176,085 to ITAA.
Okay, all in favor? unanimous.
Just to let y'all know where that'll go from here is, we will reach out to the Athletic Association, we will, internally, we will sign the document, we will have them sign the document, and then make copies, and then we should be able to release their check probably the end of next week for that. So, that's where we're headed with that, so, good job, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. What time is those meetings on Tuesdays?
So, we meet Tuesdays at, I'm going to look at my phone really quick.
Six thirty.
Three, that's what I thought, three o'clock.
Okay.
So, three to, three to four usually is when we meet.
If I might comment, please let Adam know that you plan to go, so that I can do a notice, because it will be somewhat of a special meeting if three of you go to have a discussion about town business, so we want to avoid that, so let Adam know so we can make appropriate plans in the event.
Yeah, I would try not to do that. If we can have, if one of y'all wants to come, that's fine, but I would try and stay away from that.
Absolutely. It's a 48-hour notice, so please give them two or three days' notice that we'll be coming.
If all of y'all are coming, yeah.
So, we can organize that.
Thank y'all.
Very good. Mr. Hunsinger?
We'll let Abby, okay, she's got it. All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight to, um, or first of all, I'm here to ask to award the contract to McAdams' design contract for a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. But I also wanted to kinda give y'all a brief rundown of, of the, the schedule of that, that design contract and, uh, see if we can maybe, uh, have the conversation of, of helping speed that up as best we can. If you look on your screen, um, this is kinda just a breakdown of what they anticipate. Uh, surveying is actually on the schedule, so, uh, if we execute the contract tomorrow, then, um, you know, we probably see surveys out there next week. So that's actually, again, we're, we're very on the schedule for that company, but, uh, that's a month, a month process. And then they're gonna do, once they get the survey back, then they'll go out there and do site investigation, which takes about a month. But the, the main one right now, I'd like to talk to you about today, is the four-month process on the concept. Um, in, in their experience with other towns and cities, you know, you know, you go in there, you look at a piece of property that you want to, you know, to develop as a park and you come up with several concepts. And then you bring it back to council to, uh, you know, approve or whatever, pick the selection. Obviously, I think, and you tell me if I'm wrong, y'all have a good indication of what y'all are expecting out there at that park. Uh, you've already, we've already talked about parking, so obviously parking is a big issue and I'm assuming we still want the parking in that property, more parking. So we're gonna maximize that and then we want the soccer field, if I'm correct. So if we can, we don't have to make the decision tonight, but if you can basically kinda let the staff know within the next, maybe next council meeting that that's the direction, then really that four-month process in concept, you know, can be dwindled down a, a good bit. Um, so again, crashing the schedule is what we wanna do if we can, because if you don't, then you're stuck to around November and, of course, December with the holidays and stuff, a lot of things don't get done. And so you're, you're getting into the next year with your construction documents, which is your actual design. So obviously, we wanna be starting to do the design before Christmas if all possible. So just keep that in mind, uh, as we go along the process. But I just kinda wanna say something about that tonight.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Would it help from you if you can get consensus from the council on sort of the vision that, that, that the council has for that? So for instance, Mr. Barber, Mr. Um, Amburgi, myself and so on, would, would?
That's, that, I mean, that's totally up to y'all. I mean, ag- again, this was the, look at, just real quick, if you look at the concept that Land Design came up with last time on your screen, obviously, the, the soccer field would be turned and would be longer. And what the plan would be is to look at the stormwater pond and basically go underground. And, and, and that would expand the parking more to, you can get a bigger area of parking. So we're basically trying to, we're, we're gonna take away the pond, make it all underground, and then that, use that space to expand as much parking as possible and as much soccer field as possible, if that's the general direction y'all are inclined to go with.
Yeah, I think when the guy came in here with his fancy drawing before.
Yeah.
You know, was, that's what it was, was the soccer field was on the far side of the retention pond and whoever parking on this side. I, I didn't know that you were looking at, and I think, like you said, in the conceptual thing is, what's the cost of doing it this way, where you're showing and what's the cost of doing it, you know, covering the pond? So, you know, I, I, I take it you're gonna give us both concepts?
I, I can certainly do that. That's what we need to know. We need to know if we're gonna need to come with y'all with a couple of concepts or not.
Of course, it's gonna be cost-effective. I think probably expensive to cover that pond, but, so anyway.
It is gonna be expensive, yes.
Yeah, so if we can get both concepts and a cost on that, I think that's, would be good. I mean, as far as I, what do you think, Mr. Council? I'm, yeah, I mean.
And that's fine. I just want y'all to be, your expectation is far as schedule, you know, if we do that, then, you know, you're gonna, you're not gonna, probably not do it the whole four months, but you're gonna have some time as far as that goes. So I just, again, I just wanna make sure we're all clear on the direction, that's all.
So just to get, um, just to piggyback on Mr. Barber's point, parking is needed. You're gonna try and maximize the space for parking as best as you can.
Right.
Um, you're gonna come with two options. One, where the pond is underneath.
Yep.
And the other where it's above. And you're gonna turn the soccer field to that standpoint. My only advice to you is that it doesn't necessarily have to be a full-size soccer field like what we have out there.
Yeah.
What we have out there right now is a pro field. You can get something that's a smaller field, um, and there's different dimensions in terms of ages, you know, my minimum, maximum width, length. So there's, these are some of the things that you can do as well. But I think that maximizing the space that we have there, and I think you had a slide before, it said what, ten acres, fifteen acres?
Yes, thirteen and a half.
Thirteen and a half, right. So, yeah, that's the general direction. I, I don't think anybody is wayward in, in terms of where we wanna go.
Okay, so.
To help, to help cut down some of the time.
So we'll, we'll, we'll do two concepts then and show you that and then show you the underground and, and the cost of the difference of the two.
But we got one point eight million still left that we're drawn down out of the pond, correct? And so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that's gonna take every bit of that and just let you know because.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, the, the lighting for the field itself is very expensive, so you're, you're gonna eat much, a lot of that cost.
Any other questions? I have one.
Okay.
Okay, on the, uh, the conception of it, as far as cost goes, is it, has it cost a lot more to do both plans or?
No, it's just, it's just taking the time to make those decisions, you know? We, we'll have to, they'll have to come up with the drawings, obviously, and then come up a cost and then come to y'all and, you know, it's, again, in their experience with other towns, and y'all could be totally different. People change their minds while they're going through the process and then it just lingers to several months. So that's why they have that four-month in there, is they're just not, they're just not sure. And so we wanna, we wanna, the staff wants to help you out with streamline as much as possible, so we can get direct answers and you can provide them to the manager or whoever, then we'll, we can cut that, that schedule.
So, so excuse, let me, now, this kinda tags on to that same question I asked you about. So you're saying it, it, the cost of doing one conception or the, or both is about the same or?
No, cost-wise, no. It's just timing. It's timewise, you know?
Well, I'm asking cost-wise, that, that.
No, cost is in, in there to do that, that work. Uh, you're just gonna get a true cost of the actual price tag of what it's gonna cost to install it.
Well, there's only one reason I asked that question.
Okay.
Is because I didn't know if it was a lot more money to get both concepts.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, okay.
That's built in it, no.
Then I'll leave my next question, I was gonna say, maybe we just take your advice on it than the.
Right, no, no. They're, they're certainly happy to do it for you, it's just, I just wanna, you know, let you know what the schedule would be.
Okay, Mr. Amburgi?
I just had a question, Marcus, uh, this past weekend, Sunday, with, uh, how significant was seventy spaces been? I mean, was that accommodated the traffic that day?
Most of it, if I can say that.
Okay.
Listen, any one space is gonna help, you know what I mean?
Right, more space is better.
Meaning, yeah, but it, it, it just depends. The, you have, you have two different events here, right? We have the town where the fields are being used for, uh, flat football and it's mostly local residents. When I say local, meaning Indian Trail or environments. Um, the Carolina Courts Tournament is people from anywhere that will come. Now, when they come, they eat here, they, they do different things. So it's good to have that traffic, but the thing is you do, excuse me, have that. Also, the volleyball courts will be, the volleyball, I mean, the volleyball courts in Hayden's there, I've never played on it, but it's being used all the time. So there's, there, there are things that people do, the tennis courts as well. If, I think you mentioned something about the activity. So I think, to answer your question, seventy parking spaces will definitely help, but the goal is to really maximize and possibly see if we can get more, right?
Yeah, and I will tell you, there's, there's no cost to do like a traffic study in this proposal. Now, we can certainly look at something, but really that, it really depends on that type of data. I mean, you're not gonna get that from doing traffic counts on the road. You're gonna get from, you know, these people do these events, do they have actual critical accurate data that somebody can give somebody to say, okay, yeah, we need that many parking spaces? I don't know if we have that type of accurate data, to be honest with you. So I, well, we can certainly look at that and bring it to you as a different cost and probably won't be that lot of money, but just keep that in mind as well as we keep going.
Not to throw wrenching in everything, but isn't that football field multi-use? I mean, you know, we don't have flag football all year round. Um, why can't that be, you know, put nets out there for soccer? On, I'm, I'm just saying, but, I mean, you might wanna play soccer while they're playing flag football, but why can't that be a multi-use field?
It is, it is, it is both.
It is currently.
It is currently.
And we just wanna make a private soccer field.
No, so.
I'm, I'm asking.
No, no, I know, I know. So, right now soccer season is done. Uh, it's more or less flag football. Flag football doesn't run concurrent with regular helmet padded football because it's a competing interest, right? So some, some organizations do theirs over winter, some do them in the spring from a flag football perspective. Being honest, if you, the parking, outing parking spaces will help alleviate the problem.
I'm, I'm just thinking about that field could be a parking lot.
I wouldn't do that.
I'm just saying, I mean, they would never have an issue with parking for the, all the events that go on at Carolina Courts and maybe the flag football at the same time and, and the volleyball. I'm just, I'm just making a statement, actually. I'm not trying to talk you out of it, I'm just, you know.
I wanna be curious to see the, the expense of covering the, the detention pond. It's actually becoming pretty common in areas with extremely high cost of real estate and a lot of density.
Well, they do have a lot with, uh, with actual, uh, turf field. I mean, they, they can basically make them underground systems, so it's, to me, it's a doable concept, just gotta figure out what the price tag is.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Amburgi, just to get back to your point real quick before we move on with Todd, just a real, we have nowhere else where we can put a field, an actual field. We went from two fields over there to one. Outing a field is a benefit to the residents. We have the money that we can only spend either at that park or Crooked Creek. Crooked Creek, because of wetlands, can't really do anything there. That's the genesis for this.
Okay.
The park, the, 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 there's not always two events, but in the last few weeks, there, there have been. This weekend, not everybody may come to Carolina Courts and maybe other tournaments. So it ebbs and flows, but the thing is, the additional parking, seventy to a hundred spaces, will definitely help alleviate the problem. The other thing that you have too is that there's construction going on right now with these apartments, so there's no parking available along that right there. As soon as that is kinda wrapped up, that also becomes available as well. So there's a, it's like, it's, it's a, it's like a couple of different things going on at one, causing some pain points that hopefully we can get to that point.
Cool. Just a suggestion, um, and I'm not sure what the cost would be either way, but, I mean, you might could consider a parking deck if you're also considering going over that detention pond and what the difference would be in the cost, that sort of thing.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I've, I've floated the idea out before. I mean, if you're gonna put a parking deck, I'd put it right on top of that existing park on Carolina Courts, 'cause we own that parking lot.
Right.
So I would maximize the space and put it on, on an actual existing asphalt now.
Yeah, so I'd take a look at that too.
It's very expensive, but, I mean, that's, that's an idea.
Mr. Barber, and I'm gonna ask y'all to raise your hands from now, 'cause.
Raise my hand.
I know you do, and that's, Mr. Barber, you.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
I got you right there, brother, you gotta start.
Well, I'm good with design, we discussed, and we get the one like this and then the one with the parking over retention pond. And, you know, and I realize council can mess you up, change your mind, but I've heard rumors in other towns where engineering departments have changed their mind too. I mean, you know, I, I didn't know if you was aware of that, but, you know.
It always happens with money, you know? Money talks.
So, that's okay. I understand you guys from different schools, like to get, you know, hmm, different engineering schools, getting fights and stuff, you know, arguments, I should say, but that's okay. They, uh, but anyway, no, I'm, I'm good with this and, um, I'm gonna defer to Mr. McIntyre. I never played soccer, so, hmm, never coached soccer or anything, so I've had some kids play soccer, so if you think the field's good, I, I'm good. I do have one question, kinda a little bit, that I think you and I discussed something. We got other town land kinda near this, right?
You talking about?
There's like a plot or something there that one day we could put parking, parking on?
Yes, it's right there on the screen. It's that little triangle to the right side of the soccer field.
So it's, we do have potential to add parking down the road.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
I thought that was, you know, there's a different plot there, so down the road we could add parking also additionally, so, okay.
And, and we've also had some discussion about what we could do to this parking lot to see if we could increase capacity.
Okay, so I just, there is potential to keep adding parking, that's what I just wanted to know, but that's different than this motion, so, okay.
Right. So can I have some of my award contract?
Oh, all right. You need a motion?
Yes.
I was getting ready.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mayor.
You can go right ahead.
Can I, can I make a motion, Mr. Mayor? My hand's raised.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the town of Indian Trail and McAdams for Chestnut Square Park in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
All right. Yeah, I'm, can, all in favor? Todd, you should've done that yourself. Okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Hunsinger. You wanna talk?
Yes, uh, if you recall, we, we never, uh, passed the, uh, budget amendment for the, uh, CIP ordinance for Shady Bluff improvements. And so, in doing that, um, and changing the funding source, we changed the ordinance as well, and so we needed a, approval tonight to, uh, approve the ordinance and the budget amendment for Shady Bluff. Take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? No questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion again, sir. I make a motion to adopt amended ordinance number zero-one-four regarding changing funding sources for the Shady Bluff project.
All in favor? Unanimous.
And then I'll make another motion, Mr. Mayor, to adopt the budget amendment regarding the Shady Bluff project funding.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Todd, sir.
Okay, that brings us down to new business.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, good to be in front of you. Just one more thing on Todd's, on Shady Bluff, that is going to be totally funded now by the SLRF grant that were received from the state budget. So that frees up all the other money, Todd. So, that's great news. The full nine hundred and eighty thousand is coming from the state grant. Thank you for considering the town's finance policy. What I'm here, three basic things I want to do, but we want to incorporate our procurement policy inside the robust finance policy that Kathy does a good job keeping, so that's our first step. The next step is on the actual procurement policy, we want to add that we're able to use federal funds. That's an ARPA regulation, so that's just standard fare. We want to make sure we have that in our procurement policy that we're able to use, purchase using federal funds. So I ask you for your, your approval on that. And the last thing is, and this was something I've been putting off for years, because I'm from the old school, but cash disbursements, we want to add that we can use electronic payments. It's come up now where a couple of things, for example, we pay the sheriffs off-duty, we now have to pay them by wire, and there's a charge on that. So they charge us additional, so if we're able to electronic funding, there'll be no charge. So this is something that's, a lot of towns are using. I've been putting it off for a while, but I think it's time. And again, the internal control will be there, triple signature, Mike will be the last signature on it, he'll see everything. And we're going to start real small, sheriff, the wax for a few purchases. So I ask you to give us approval for that, and that's it. Everything else is good.
Very good, any questions? Do a fantastic job. So, can I get a motion on the finance, updated finance policy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amended finance policy dated five-twenty-four, twenty-two, as discussed by the Director of Finance, Mr. Waltz.
All in favor?
Thank, thank you.
Okay, that brings us down to the, again, the street resurfacing contract.
Yes, Council, we did a bid opening yesterday for the, this FYI's resurfacing contract. We had four bids, and they ranged from two and a half to a little over three million dollars. And so, the apparent bidder is Red Clay Industries Incorporated for two million five hundred forty-four thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. And I would like a motion to award that contract.
Any questions?
Do I have one, sir? How many, how many streets or miles of street?
It's about fifteen streets.
Fifteen streets?
Fifteen to seventeen streets, yeah. I will tell you, I'm going to come back to y'all possibly next meeting, if it's not too crowded, and talk to you about the four-deck reclamation process. That is when you go out and totally reconstruct a roadway due to the fact it's not built to a standard. We're doing it for First Avenue, and we're also doing two streets. David, you may remember, we did Brandon Oaks Parkway probably seven years ago, seven years. It's a, it's a dirty process, we will get a lot of complaints, so just forewarning you. But I'd like to come to y'all and kind of explain you the process, show you some video, and that way you got a good understanding of what's going to happen.
Very good, any other questions? Well, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three street resurfacing contract.
I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Correction, it is this FYI, so it's FY twenty-one, twenty-two, not twenty-two, twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor, let me make that motion again. I make a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two street resurfacing contract with Red Clay Industries Incorporated in the amount of two million five hundred forty-four thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy cents.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us down to a grand marshal appointment. First thing I'd like to ask is, does anybody have any, anybody they'd like to nominate? Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Linda Pfeiffer.
Okay, do I have any, any other nominations, or is that, that it? Okay, well, that's, that's fantastic. Let me make this real quick. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Linda Pfeiffer as the grand marshal for the Town of Indian Trail for the July fourth, twenty-twenty-two parade.
All in favor? Very good, thank you, unanimous. Just for everyone's FYI information.
One, one second, this is to nominate, right?
Yes.
But then there's a second motion to appoint.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's right.
Let me make, you mind if I make that motion, sir, my hand is raised?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to appoint Linda Pfeiffer as the grand marshal for the Town of Indian Trail for the July fourth, twenty-twenty-two parade.
All in favor? Unanimous. Very good, thank you. Just real quick FYI, like I said, Ms. Pfeiffer is Chase Kogle's mother. And also, I expect Jimmy, her husband, to be probably with her, I would think, and that was Chase's stepdad and/or dad, as he looked at him as, as his dad. And I think this is a great thing that we're doing. And I spoke with Sheriff Kathy today, and he just tickled to death. And by the way, Hayden, he, I don't know who does this, he requests a ride behind that, behind her, her car, or float, or. What are, a grand marshal, what, I've never been in a parlor parade, I've never seen the grand marshal. What, what do they ride in?
So typically, they are the first vehicle, and we'll work with them to secure something and potentially work with Captain James to, to figure out appropriate law enforcement.
Very good, very good.
So I put the captain in first, and the grand marshal, and the sheriff, right? That what you want, you're asking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that'd be good.
Pretty much, well, very good, and I think, I think that's a home run for our town. It really is, so I'll stop it there. Thank, thank you, Council, for, for doing that. That brings us to discussion items, and we don't have any, so there's no discussion on, no discussion items. And we don't have a closed session. It gives us down to the manager's update.
You see the four items that went out in your agenda package on the land design report that will be coming out to you. We will get you an advanced copy in advance of your June twenty-eighth meeting. And just to remind you what that is, is to look at your properties that you have, Holly Park, the eleven acres on Monroe Road, and some smaller stuff, to see what the possibilities you might be interested in as far as developing it. The report will also include some information about connectivity with greenways and sidewalks. And so then, what we would like you to do is, once you take that report at a future time that's convenient to you, identify which projects you want to look at more in-depth, so stay tuned for that. Some of you weren't on the board when this came up last time, it's about streetlights on Highway seventy-four. If you drive seventy-four at night, it is a dark and dangerous road. And we have been in touch with Duke Power and NC DOT. We hope that once Duke submits their final design, NC DOT will approve it, and they will start to put the streetlights in. It will make a difference when you're driving Highway seventy-four at night. You see the internet security enhancements on Chestnut and Crooked Creek Park. We're waiting on the internet provider, and we will let you know when that's ready to go. Also, the generator work is underway. We're looking at doing a generator, not only for Town Hall, but also for the sheriff's office, and also EV or electric charging stations for electric cars. That we have been in touch with someone, and we may be able to qualify for some grant funding to help pay for that because of our location on Highway seventy-four. There's a couple upcoming things I want to share with you to make sure that, that you're familiar with. One is, if you haven't told us yet, we're having employee luncheon this coming Thursday at Town Hall from twelve to two. We'd love to have you. It'll be hamburgers and hot dogs, and I see there's some ice cream and other stuff there, and Park and Rec may come up with some, some games, I don't know, but we'd love to have you. The other thing is, there will be a public meeting on the Indian Trail Complete Street below us in the Shirley Howell Room from five-thirty to seven-thirty, also on the twenty-sixth. So if you want to come at twelve and stay all afternoon, that's cool too, we'd love to, we'd love to have you. I think many of you will be here for Memorial Day Celebration, which starts at eleven o'clock. The keynote speaker will be Lieutenant Sam Johnson, who is U.S. Marine Corps Reserve. Don't forget Family Fun Day, Mr. Mayor. Hayden has promised you fireworks from two to nine. Hayden will be sending out a separate message to you in case you need a parking space or any special accommodations, so just look for that, probably tomorrow, and just reply back to him. Also, if you haven't completed the public transportation survey by Union County, I think that survey is open to June twelfth. The last thing I have on my report is that the Mayor Pro Tim and I were having a discussion the other day, and, and he was talking about the need, or what was important to him, is being able to find out what's coming up at future meetings. And we have an internal worksheet that we use, and we move things about as things change. And so we want to clean that up and start sending that, that out to you. But just as an FYI, at your next meeting on June fourteenth, right now, what we have scheduled is to adopt the budget. Carolina Courts will be coming, is scheduled to be here at your next meeting. We'll be asking you to approve the downtown contract that Brandy has been working on. You heard Todd talk about the street reclamation. And Brandy will have a public hearing, annex, and conditional zoning on Chestnut. They have been to the developer workshop, that's fifty-seven single-family units across from Brookhaven. She will also, it was scheduled tonight, she couldn't be here to do an overview of the comp plan. We had an open house last Thursday, I believe, in the Shirley Howell Room. And then moving to the twenty-eighth, we've got right now scheduled for the comp plan approval and the land design report. And, Mr. Mayor, I was reminded the other day that typically in the summer, the council makes a decision on whether you want to have one or two meetings in July or August, so y'all can decide that at your last meeting in June. And if for some reason something comes up in between that, you can call for a special meeting. That's all the information I have, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, well, good job, and thank you for all the information. Okay, that brings us down to council comments. And I think what we'll do tonight is we'll just start down there on your end, Mr. McIntyre. We'll just work our way down.
My hand is up, sir.
Oh, okay, did you have a question?
No, no, I can speak, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I can speak freely, thank you. No demerits for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity. Council, appreciate the work that you guys are doing on some of these projects, moving some of the things forward, helping ship the town, its vision, sort of, you know, it, it's character, if I can say that. Mike, you and your staff, every one of your, your, your direct reports, even those who do not report to you, you guys do a fantastic job here in town. The reason we do not see a lot of people in here is because people have confidence in the work that we're doing here at Town Hall, both council and the staff. So I want to commend you guys for all the work that you do, keeping things running. I know we do keep you guys busy with some of the projects, some of the requests, some of the questions, but we do appreciate the information that you bring back. This week, people are graduating. I myself, for the very first time, I'm going to have one of my children graduating from high school. So, you know, that means that I have a big college bill coming in the fall. So, Tom, I may have to reach out to you for a second job on the weekend. But want to congratulate all the graduates, whether it's high school, preschool, you know, middle school, and also college, you know, education is really key. And if you can, you know, keep going, want to continue to keep going, get good grades, but congratulations to all the graduates here in Indian Trail. The other thing that I have is, we don't have a meeting before June fourth, right, Mr. Kramer? This is the last one? But I can confirm on record that there will be fireworks, right?
We have orders, and we pay for half of them.
Okay, all right, good, so just the public to know that Mr. Kramer has promised fireworks, rain or shine. But thank you, everybody, have a good evening, appreciate all of you guys, and thank you again.
Very good, okay.
Not many people here to leave comments for. I hope there's a lot of people watching at home. I know that we have another ground of COVID coming through, so, anyway, but I really hope in the future we have more people here, because this is, the people, the people run the town by, you know, who they vote for and what they see going on. So, you know, I do hope that we have active people here in the town, because it's important for them to know what's going on in their neighborhoods and how it affects their neighborhoods. And appreciate the staff and the job you do, and the transparency is excellent now. Thank you very much, and have a safe trip home, thank you.
Mr. Amberger?
Yeah, I just want to say, a quick meeting tonight, it's still daylight out, we're leaving. And all the information we received tonight, hopefully, like you said, a bunch of people is watching online. That way they can be informed, and God bless everyone, have a good night.
Okay, Mr. Todd?
Thank you, sir. Didn't have to raise my hand, I'm doing pretty good. Congratulations to your son on graduation, and I appreciate him choosing the state of Virginia, since he knew that's where I was born, probably, to go to school. So, I just think that's great. And all the other high school graduates, congratulations. I do want to give a shout out last week with EMS Week to all the first responders out there, they do a great job. Shout out to the Sheriff's Department, I know they had a law enforcement memorial ceremony down there. And my friend Kathy Sherman in here, and a bunch of people went to DC, and they had six thousand five hundred people who did a vigil for fallen officers this year. And she lives here, but her brother was killed, was killed in the line of duty in Texas this year. So, I know the, you know, that, that's really good that they recognize and help out those people. His name was William Jeffrey, so Officer Jeffrey. And I do remind everybody that we're still taking applications for the July fourth parade, if you want to get a float in. Also like to let everybody know to come out to Family Fun Day. The Stormwater Committee is going to have a table with the infamous Larry Miller will be there, I understand, and on the committee. So if you want to come by, and guarantee no flooding, hopefully, while we're at the booth, but the, but you want to come by and talk about stormwater, and I know a lady lives over on Keelwee Circle might come by and have some questions, so, the, so the, but that, you know, if you want to come by, that's good. Shout out, last week was Little Joe T.'s birthday, I appreciate everybody's birthdays on that, especially yours, Mr. Amberger, he was really appreciated that, so, and you too, Mr. Officer Jeffrey. So, the, but other than that, I appreciate the staff, thank you for getting the food for us every week. It's really great that we're at the meetings and all that, so thanks to the staff and everybody being here, and I appreciate everything, have a blessed evening.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Barber, just a couple of quick things. I'd like to say that I went to my first CRTPO meeting last week, and I, I liked it, I enjoyed it. We got some things accomplished, and I was fortunate enough to have a gentleman, Stephen Rosenberg, sit beside me, and he introduced himself, and we spoke, and I found out that he was the chairman of the Finance Committee. And he was appointed by, I believe, Tim Moore, who is head of the, what is he, the?
Speaker.
Speaker of the House. And he carries a lot of clout. I went to the meeting not going to speak, because I'd never been there before, and they got to talking about money and talking about towns should give money to the DOT to get their projects done, so I couldn't help but speak and, and let them know that Indian Trail has done that in the past, and we hadn't got anything done. And to make a long story short, Mr. Rosenberg became very interested and asked several questions about why we weren't getting anything done. And he said that, that he was going to see to it that maybe we could get some things done. He did not, he did not care for the fact that we had participated and not received anything. So we'll see how that happens with us. And also, I met our district, I believe it's, are we in District Ten?
Yeah.
We're in District Ten, the head of that, can, what is his?
Brett Knott.
Brett Knott, very nice gentleman, came up and gave me a, a brief kind of recap of what's going on in Indian Trail. And, you know, they're, they're working out there on the roads, they're, they're, you know, buying land, they're, he just said the whole process was going to, which I didn't want to hear, was going to take longer than they probably thought it was going to take. And I guess we've heard that many, many times before, so we'll see what happens. But I, I was, it was an enjoyable visit, and I look forward to the next meeting also. Last thing I'd just like to say is, you know, I always like to thank everyone here, like to thank a great staff. I'd like to also just say, it's an honor to be the, the, the mayor of Indian Trail. I, I, I'm just flabbergasted by it, and I'm tickled to death. And I just thank what the council did for, for this, and I intend on being a good mayor, do my best. And I've enjoyed it, and hopefully, we'll just keep moving on in the right direction. And it's, it's a lot of fun, and it's an honor, and I just wanted to thank you again, thank you. So, hope everybody has a good night, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Sorry, before I make the motion, just want to say that I also want to feel, I feel very blessed that we chose you for the mayor, I think that was a wise choice to help us, lead us through this, but also because we have one of the best dressed mayors around. Can't wait for the sweater vest to come back. And with that being said, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, thank you, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.